Good evening. This evening is April 1st, 2024, and the time is 5:30 PM. It is a work session night, and we're going to start out with a city update from our newly appointed Chief of Staff, Mr. Brian McCain.
Well, thank you. It's my first night here, so forgive me if I mess up somewhere. The only city update I have is the community cleanup, which is May 18th from 8:00 to 3:00 at CSU Pueblo and the state fairgrounds.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Okay. Anything else from the mayor tonight? And how about council? Yes, President Aliff.
So the piece of property next to the steel mill, as you're coming on I-25, it is such a mess. Who owns the property?
His name is John Starr.
So that's not owned by Burlington Northern?
It's not. It's a private entity, and the city's been in contact with him.
Okay, so you're on top of it?
I am. We have a couple dumpsters down there right now, and we're trying to work towards some additional things that the city can do to try to get it cleaned up.
Where are the dumpsters? Because I went by there this morning.
You've got to go all the way down and then around to the right behind Ferguson. It's all the way back up in that area. They they enter the property on the railroad side to drop the dumpsters down there. So you-
I don't think we're talking about the same spot.
We are. You would have to get out of your car, walk down the hill, and then up and around to get to where the dumpsters are, because it's a it's a slope. So the only place there's an area to put a dumpster is quite a walk. Yep. Yeah, so if you were to go into Benedict Park, there's cutouts at the fence, walk down a slope, and then around the corner to the right is where you would see it. It's hard. You'd have to go down there to be able to see it.
Okay. And then the second thing I wanted to ask is that the it's my understanding on social media that the police department is putting some social media posts about weekly arrests and things like that. That would be very nice for city council to have, since I'm not on
Sure.
social media. It seems seems remiss that we don't get a report.
Okay. I'll have them send it. Yeah, they're doing one for the dice team. And then there's a couple other that they're doing, just a weekly update on contacts, arrests made, recovery of weapons, and then recovery of stolen merchandise. So I'll have them send that to council as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, Councilor Martinez?
Thank you.
For the cleanup, is it also at the CSUP site, or is it just going to be at the fairgrounds?
It is on both.
Excellent. When are we going to expecting those flyers?
We'll work on them.
Okay. And I know that in the past, we've also been able to have, like, if people can't go to those two sites, they get like an X percentage off if they go directly to the dump. Is that going to be a thing, too?
Yeah, we'll probably do it the same way. And then when the lines get too long at the end, when we're getting ready to close, we give the free vouchers to go directly to the dump instead of piling up the line through our clock. So it'll be the same process that we've done for the last four.
I've already had people reaching out about it, because it's starting to be like a reoccurring annual thing. So that's good to hear. And then Counselor Maestri, I'm looking at the work session schedule.
Yes.
I'm noticing that we do have the fifth Monday booked. Can where normally we don't necessarily have-
No, I just actually went back to Tracy just right now in an email exactly and let her know that it was the fifth Monday.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are we not having a work session then?
No, we won't.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Um, Counselor Gomez?
Just want to note for the record that Joe Latino is on Zoom out of, I believe it's Phoenix, just for the record.
I'm here.
Mr. Latino, do you have anything that you'd like to bring up right now?
Not at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so we're all done?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Romero. How are you tonight?
Very well. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mayor Graham, President Aliff, and members of City Council. It's nice to see all of you. We are in the 84th day of 120-day session, so we have 36 days left, not that we're counting. And just wanted to give you a brief update on three things, hopefully to move along quickly, and then I'll turn it over to Alec. First, just wanted to talk to you a little bit about the state budget, because the state budget now, they finished the 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 presentation and introduction in the House, and now the budget bill will go to the Senate. But there's some really good things in there for Pueblo that I wanted to highlight for you indirectly, but but also directly impacting the city. One is, for the first time in the history of K-12 education, they're going to fully fund K-12. Now, it's not at the current, you know, rate of inflation, but it fully funds K-12. That means more money for our K-12 schools in Pueblo. And, you know, one of the things that we are really following for the city, you know, it's just the budget component that we are concerned about is the the school lunch program, the healthy meals for all school lunch program. There was a $56 million shortfall, and we were really worried about what the Joint Budget Committee was going to do on that. And they fully funded that $56 million shortfall, so there shouldn't be an interruption in in the school lunch program for K-12. In higher ed, I was really, we followed as well, obviously, because of CSU Pueblo and the Community College. I was really proud of the decisions the Joint Budget Committee made. The governor and the governing institutions wanted to increase tuition to 5.6%. They captured it 3%, and rather than the governor's request of 48 million for higher education, the Joint Budget Committee decided to appropriate 56.3, so that means more money for CSU Pueblo and more money for Pueblo Community College. Also, one of the major decisions they made was to increase the capacity at the Institute of Mental Health in Pueblo. That means more jobs. But they're also going to, with the bill that's going through the legislature, also provide more training for healthcare professionals. And and hopefully that will help recruit and with the potential that they would open another ward at the Institute of Pueblo. There were also significant grants to the Department of Local Government that Pueblo should be able to apply for. And once the session is over with, we promise to provide a synopsis of and more detail to some of those opportunities for the city. And that also is true in the Department of Public Safety, where there's potential for grants and to law enforcement in Pueblo. So, you know, really good results from that. We'll follow the budget bill in the Senate and hopefully keep all of those things intact that impact Pueblo, especially, you know, the increased capacity at the institute where there will be a significant number of jobs that they'll be adding to increased capacity. I wanted to give you an update on the resolutions that you did in terms of manufacturing for Pueblo. Those bills made it out of committees, but there were amendments to those bills, and those bills are in trouble. And and as I like to say, I think a lot of it has to do with the campaign Pueblo Strong, the mayor's involvement, city council's involvement, and the resolution really have made a difference. And so those bills are starting to slow down. The governor's office is getting more involved. We're hoping that I was talking to the Everest lobbyist this 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 morning in a meeting. We're really hoping one of the most problematic bills were one sent to 166 that we're going to we're going to be able to kill that bill. And we'll report on that out to you next week. The one thing that I wanted to leave you with, just because we're getting questions from folks up at the Capitol, and you may be getting it, and again, we're offering this if you would like more detail around the rail system. There was an article in CPR News, and the headline says, excuse me, as trains as as trains through Pueblo, as trains through Boulder and Steamboat Springs get new attention, southern Coloradans worry they're they're the caboose of Front Range Rail Plan. And there's that headline, there's some truth to that headline, only because I think they're obviously, you know, the bigger populations up north are going to be priority. But I also think there are so many different strains of what's going on with this. And if you would like more information, as you know, there there are separate components of this. RTD, through a special tax, has money in place for a rail system from Denver to Boulder. That's a separate component. The bill that we've been following for the city, the city hasn't taken a position on it, Senate Bill 184. This is a bill that's being sponsored by the president of the Senate, and the reason we bring it to your attention is that this there's a tax associated with rental cars that would raise about $54 million. The reason we're interested in it is it's not designated, quote, "for the northern component of this rail system." So potentially, southern Colorado and Pueblo in particular could avail itself of some of that. So if you have any further questions, it's not simply one bill. There obviously are the city of Pueblo, they they have applied for funds for a station. That's separate federal money that's involved in this. But if you go out and you're doing town hall meetings and 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 people start to ask about that, and you'd like a little, you know, a short one-page primer on those things, we can get that prepared, and we can send that out to you this week. And I'll turn it over to Alec.
Okay, thanks, Gil. Good evening, members of council. There are a few bills I would like to update you on. Two bills have their first committee hearing tomorrow. The first bill deals with limiting the use of prone restraints. That bill is House Bill 241372, regulating law enforcement use of prone restraint. This will be heard upon adjournment in House Judiciary Committee. The aim of this bill is to limit the use of prone restraints by law enforcement, limiting its application exclusively to situations that justify deadly force. The law enforcement community has raised serious concerns about how this policy might affect officers' ability to safely fulfill their duties. Moving on to Senate Bill 24174, Sustainable Affordable Housing Assistance. This bill was the result of collaborative effort between CML and the governor's office. It requires comprehensive statewide, regional, and local housing needs assessments. The legislation requires housing action plans every six years and modifies municipal master plans to incorporate water supply and strategic growth elements by the end of 2026. 174 does have technical guidance and funding attached to the bill to support the development of these assessments, master plans, and the goals outlined in the bill. Lastly, as Gil mentioned, I want to briefly kind of summarize Senate Bill 24184 and what exactly it does. So this bill already passed its first committee of reference last week. And so what it would do, as Gil mentioned, it would impose up to $3 per day in additional fees on rental cars, generating about $55 million annually to an enterprise. And so this legislation is supported by the governor's office. It's sponsored by the Senate President and Speaker of the House. And really, what it's trying to do is provide that seed money to attract more federal funds from that $66 billion that's been allocated for rail projects from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act passed in 2021. So the state's contribution will match federal investments with the rental car fee, which is viewed as a politically favorable funding mechanism that doesn't require voter approval. These initial funds will prioritize projects in the north with the expansion in the Northwest Rail Corridor to Boulder and Front Range Passenger Rail, focusing the initial phase of development on connecting Denver to Boulder to Fort Collins, and as well as initiating mountain rail service through Steamboat Springs, Craig, and Hayden. And so this funding would also support the expansion of bus staying services across the state as well. But the significance of this bill really lies in its ability to leverage funds as efficiently and quickly as possible to expedite the drawdown of federal funds. So it involves leveraging, as Gil mentioned, funds that RTD has been accumulating through their sales tax since 2002. And so this was initially intended for a commuter commuter rail between Denver and Boulder. But what the state is proposing to do is bring those investments together to attract more federal funding and use that for the broader Denver to Fort Collins Passenger Rail project. The sponsors and the governor have stated that these these near-term steps would be crafted to support and not negatively impact efforts already in motion for passenger rail service from Fort Collins to Pueblo. They said, if anything, this will accelerate the timeline for full service and help build ridership. So what's needed is, in the future, is a future ballot initiative, increasing the sales and use tax. And this will be necessary to provide the rest of the funding necessary to connect Denver to Pueblo and farther south to Trinidad. So thank you for your time and attention. I'll turn it back over to council for any questions or comments you might have.
Just just to wrap up, Madam Chair, the bill that to circle back to the bill that Alec mentioned, I know President Aliff had had some concerns about that bill and the limitations potentially it could put on law enforcement. That bill will be heard tomorrow. We've been asked again if the city would take a position, and so just wanted to alert you to that. That bill's up. It's still got a long way to go. You know, we'll see what happens to the bill. We'll be covering that bill for you and reporting out on the outcome of that bill tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Yeah.
Mr. Gomez, Counselor Gomez?
I really haven't a chance to look at this bill as much as I would like to, but I'm just curious. On the top surface, if anybody is aware of any of the education process that some of the sponsors of this bill have gone through or been, are we aware of any of that? Because this is really a serious issue for me.
I'm not sure. If you're asking whether the bill has gone through stakeholder process, we're unaware of any stakeholder. We were not invited, you know, in our capacity of representing the city. And obviously, when we discussed this bill with you last week, we indicated almost every law enforcement entity out there, including the chiefs of police in many municipalities, are opposed to this bill. And I think that's because they weren't included in any kind of a stakeholder in process, Counsel, Counselor Gomez. So we anticipate there will be a lot of criticism of this bill. And I think there's going to be a lot of, you know, your background in law enforcement. I think there are going to be a lot of experts testifying about the difficulty of bringing somebody up from from a position, you know, up to their feet. And, you know, some of the other requirements that the bill requires law enforcement do before they actually restrain somebody. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Counselor Martinez?
Hi, Gil. Um, for for that transportation bill that was talked a little bit about about so after, can I just, I just want to clarify, after it passes, municipalities then would have to have have a ballot measure to increase the sales tax, or the state would increase the sales and use tax?
It would be, go ahead, go ahead, Alec.
Oh, I was just, so they, the state hasn't fully finalized ballot language, and they're not totally certain that they're going to bring it in 2024, but all signs point to a ballot measure that would provide that funding necessary for the buildout of the rest of the Front Range Passenger Rail.
Yeah.
And so, yes, to your question, it would be state.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And in the rationale for that is even the bill, Senate 184, isn't going to generate enough income from the rental piece. You know, they need 200 or 300 million dollars for this to become viable.
Do we know at what percentage the increase would be at the state level?
We don't. They have not finalized that language. As soon as we get more information, again, we'll be following Senate 184, and as we get more information from legislators, we'll get that to you. But that has not been finalized.
Okay, thanks.
And so, Mr. Romero, they're hearing the police officer bill tomorrow, the law enforcement bill tomorrow. When would they be voting on it?
So in the first committee, they'll vote tomorrow. They've been holding bills over, but I we anticipate that they'll 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 vote on this bill. And and we have, since, you know, we're monitoring this bill for the city, but we obviously can't take a position until the city council does. We don't have a real good count on committee members, because we haven't individually lobbied them. It's going to be a close vote on this bill. It may not survive the first committee, but it's a Democrat-supported bill, but there are Democrats within that caucus that don't support this particular bill. So.
So it's still okay to take a position?
Yes. Yes, Madam Chair.
So shall we give Mr. Gifford consensus or?
We already did a week ago.
Oh, we did. Okay.
And Counselor Maestri, Chief Noller is going up tomorrow to testify.
Okay, yeah, I knew he was going to testify. And that's why I was, when he said that we hadn't taken one, I thought we had.
But you can't get the resolution on until next Monday.
So it is on for next Monday on the 8th.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, just for clarification, because, you know, this becomes an issue with the Secretary of State's office. Are we are okay to say that the city of Pueblo, I'm not worried about the resolution, but we're okay to say the city of Pueblo opposes this bill?
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right.
Okay. That's good enough for us. Thank you.
Okay, and Counselor Florence?
This is Dennis Gil. I have really no question here, but I wanted to follow up on the question that Counselor Martinez just brought up. The 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 state of Colorado developed what's called the Front Range Passenger Rail District. So it and that's, it'll be, it was initiated a year and a half ago. Prior to that, it was a committee that fell under the state of Colorado. And and the study about bringing rail passenger rail from Fort Collins to Trinidad, it's been being looked at over the last five years. And in Pueblo, we have three representatives on that district, and that's Sal Pace, Danaa Escar, and myself. And so the the district is the now has the power to tax all the counties that will fall within the railroad route from Fort Collins to Trinidad. So whatever monies that are developed will go into this special taxing district. And we don't know what that is. We're in the process of figuring out whether or not it's even going to be on the ballot in November, because there's so much information that has to be developed. So I just wanted to let you know that the receptacle to accept all this funding, whether it's this rental car fee or whether it's a match by the federal government, it will go into this district, and it's governed by a board of about 60. It's a huge board. It's about 16 people on it. And but anyway, I'll, as we go along through this process, I'll make sure to let everybody know where we're at in the process. So thank you.
Counselor Hernandez?
Thank you. I read Chief Noller had issued a position on that restraint is is that is Chief Noller going up tomorrow to testify? And that will be the document he'll be testifying from.
Yeah, Chief, I don't know if you have anything more to add to that.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Thank you, sir. Yeah, I wrote an op-ed. I think it came out in Sunday's paper regarding some of the concerns that we have, both I have as the chief of police here in Pueblo and I was also the chair of the Legislative Committee for the CACP. I will be documenting, I will be testifying to some of the things that I talked about in there, but I'll probably bring up other other issues that are also related to that. But primarily, the testimony from me will be pretty close to what I put out in that in that op-ed.
That was provided, did you say, to the chair of the Legislative Committee already?
I am the chair of the Legislative Committee for the CACP. Yeah, that's the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police. So I will be going up there tomorrow to testify as the the chief of police for the public police department, the deputy mayor, and the Legislative Chair for CACP to express our concerns over this bill. It's, I'm going to be honest with you, if it passes, it's going to have a catastrophic effect on retention and recruiting. So.
Thank you, Chief.
If anybody wants, I can explain more about what those reasons are, but they're fairly well lined out in my op-ed.
And Chief, if you need anything when you get to the Capitol, let us know. We'll be there.
Okay. Sandra Solan is the lobbyist for the CACP, so I'll be working with her on that, but I'll look for you up there.
Sounds good. Yep. And President Aliff, I apologize. I misunderstood last week when you took that vote. I apologize that we didn't record that as, you know, as opposition to the bill, but we'll we'll get that recorded tonight on the Secretary of State's website.
Okay, anything else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Romero and Alex, for your time tonight, and we'll see. And next we have Pura updates from Mr. Jerry Pacheco.
Good evening. On, because there's actually a couple of bills that might affect, I guess it really doesn't affect urban renewal, per se, but HB 241172 would grant the counties, the counties, the ability to use TIF, whereas right now it's currently only a municipal tool. So that's kind of interesting. From a planning perspective, that could be problematic in that it could drive ex-urban growth. That was a big issue when I used to work in Douglas County, because big neighborhoods like the Pioneer, Stonegate, those places are unincorporated areas. And so what ends up happening is the residents of the municipality actually over contribute to like things like that are countywide functions, like sheriff protection services. So just, I'm a government nerd, so if you guys don't have any background on that stuff, but that would be something that we would want to watch, in my opinion, because then Pueblo West could potentially start be start using that, and that would be competing directly with some activities that the city has. So.
Yes, go ahead.
That's really interesting, Jerry. Are is there like a conglomerate of urban renewal authorities across the state? And do they, are they opposing this? Or what's the vibe? What's the vibe?
Yeah, they are. And it goes back to that issue of urban growth should be focused in cities.
Right.
Not unincorporated areas. Because what it shows is that they end up being subsidized by the cities.
And has Pura signed on off on that letter?
No, I just found out about it this morning. I actually, the the conference for Downtown Colorado Inc. is this week. It's in Durango. I have, I couldn't make it, but they're going to be discussing this and some other bills.
Okay. If you could keep us updated on that, that would be interesting.
Sure.
Thanks.
No. Well, good afternoon. Good evening. I'm Jerry Pacheco, Executive Director of the Urban New Authority. Been with them since the end of 2015. Having moved back to Pueblo in 2004, I've seen firsthand how the transformation has occurred with the Urban Renewal Authority. It's changed over time. The city used to manage via contract the Urban Renewal Authority for many, 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 many years. And then in 2006, I believe it was, the decision was made to have the authority be self-sufficient with its own staff and its own responsibilities, and that's when it was spun out. So if any of you remember Mike Tedesco, who was the first modern era Executive Director of Urban Renewal, if you remember way back when, he was actually an employee of the city. His office was actually right next to my office at the Planning Department. And Mr. Tedesco was hired by the city and provided to the authority via that contract. And then they spun out, and that's how we are. And the reason why I bring that up is since 2006, then they spun out and that's how we are. And the reason why I bring that up is since two thousand and six, the authority prior to oh, four, there was only one urban renewal, urban renewal project area, and that was the original district that was downtown that was created in nineteen eighty five. In eighty, in two thousand and four, they approved, the city approved the expansion of our downtown district, which included the Riverwalk and a series of of things there. And through that action, we built the Main Street Parking Garage and some other stuff. But since that, we're now at fourteen different districts and with more on the way. And I I think what it is is Pueblo was late to the game in using the tools that other municipalities in the state of Colorado were using. And what I mean by that is Denver is probably the best example of how to utilize an urban renewal authority for transformative work. Um, the Araria campus were C S were C U Denver, Metro State, Community College of Denver, the Tivoli, all that was an urban renewal project. Stapleton, which is now some other name, I don't remember the which was the largest infill urban redevelopment project in the country. When it happened, that was an urban renewal project. And so different cities have been using it for a long time. We're kind of a little bit late to the game, but we're we're getting there. In two thousand and six, the Urban Renewal Authority's budget was two point nine million. Today, it's at thirty two point two million. And what we're responsible for back in two thousand and six, the only debt we had was the financing of the Convention Center. Today, we have over a hundred and thirty five point eight million dollars in outstanding bonds that go towards projects that your predecessors on City Council approved and the authority is taxed to implement. So um, there's this evolution that's going on, and we actually have more and more folks come darken our door every week wanting some sort of incentive for some sort of development. And so um, I'm of the opinion that we need to be a little judicious about how we're using this tool. And I don't think we've actually had a very good opportunity to to discuss urban renewal because we, for the last five years, we've been operating in a uh, not in a good position. Let's just put it that way. So in any event, I'm here tonight to give you a kind of a quick overview of what we are and what we're what we've done, what we're doing. And then some of the future work that we're doing, we probably won't handle today because it'd have to be at a at a subsequent meeting because this is a pretty pretty thick group of of pretty thick bulk of material to get through. So why don't I go ahead and start? You know, our mission at the Urban Renewal Authority is to create dynamic change, that we are a change agent. We only operate in specific geographic areas approved by the City Council. You know, our focus and a lot of the focuses of urban renewal authorities across the state is focusing on the downtown, the Central Business District that as the advent of the mall in nineteen seventies, fifty, sixties and seventies, it kind of destroyed the old downtowns. And urban renewal in Colorado has existed since nineteen fifty eight as a response to that shift from the downtown to suburban uh, economic activity. So urban renewal is part of that. And so all those big dynamic change projects you see like in Denver, for example, those are all done you know, in the wake of of all of that. Um, Pueblo was no different. In the early eighties, when uh, Mr. Tony Fortino was Chairman of the Board, the steel mill had collapsed. They were looking at alternatives to revitalize the city. The thought was the Convention Center and a hotel and doing some other things in our downtown. The downtown roadway network was realigned, a bunch of other things. So since then to today, uh, it's been been quite a journey, but it's always been couched in transformative, helping the city economically, removing blighted properties. If you were some of you may remember what the property look was before the Convention Center was there. It was Skid Row. So it's uh, it's been a long time coming, but it was was successful. Um, this is where this slide here talks about powers of authority and I understand you had a presentation about home rural municipalities. Uh, I think it was last week or the week after, but the state statute is a funny little thing in that you can have matters of statewide concern. You can have matters of local concern, and then you have matters of local and mixed local and statewide concerns. Urban renewal is a matter of statewide concern. We are an animal that is authorized for use by municipality at their choice through the the statute. So that's that's how we are created, and that's the whole setup of why the authorities are independent entities of the city. Part of that has to do with when authority authorities borrow money, it's not a general obligation of the city. And so it was a real uh, a a safety move, I guess, so to speak, that they said, all right, cities can use this tool. But if they screw up or something goes bad, we don't want the taxpayers to have to pay for it. In other words, what we pledge to debt is revenues. If the revenue goes away, that's it. You can't go after the taxpayers to pay our bills. The city is a different story, and then if there was something horribly awfully bad and the court were to decide that you pay, you got to pay for it, you have to go, uh, the the taxpayers of the city would actually be responsible. So when I talk about this hundred and thirty two million dollar in outstanding bonds we have, it's not the city's responsibility. It's solely ours. So keep that in mind. And so these powers of the authority, um, they're very, very broad, and a lot of them involve land use matters. Land use matters that you really pay attention to your planning and zoning commission. But if you look at the statutory language, it talks about arranging with the city or other public body rezonings and other land use actions. Okay, so you now have an urban renewal authority that's looking at things like urban redevelopment in our downtown in addition to your planning and zoning commission, in addition to your elected officials on City Council. So where we operate, where urban renewal authorities operate, they are empowered and charged to focus only on a specific geographic area and to address specific problems. And so they're pretty broad. I mean, um, I'm not going to go through all of them, but if you really look at each and every one of those, you can find dynamic, you could find abilities to make implement dynamic change through all of those. You know, urban renewal plans, they exist from time to time. They can be as broad or as specific as you decide. That is at the discretion of the city. Uh, we've we have very specific urban renewal plans such as Everest, and we have very broad urban renewal plans such as our Lower East Side District. And each and every one of our districts are all unique. They're all different. They all address different challenges. And then you have the plan. So you, okay, our desire is to go into this particular neighborhood and do certain things and activities. All the different individual activities are their own individual little projects. They're undertakings and activities. They're they're things that we do on a day-to-day basis or a semi-annual basis to try to affect change in these neighborhoods. And some of them are are very straightforward. Some are not. Um, the statute really sets urban renewal up to be, I don't want to call it a clearinghouse, but but a tool for other taxing bodies in a municipality to partner with and revitalize uh, problem areas. I'll get the good example here is a school district. We have a rare situation here in Pueblo where we're actually closing schools. Um, they have surplus property due and surplus buildings due to declining enrollment. That is not this what's going on in Denver. That's not what's going on in Douglas County or Jeffco or anything else. They're trying to build schools as fast as they can. We're the opposite situation. A lot of schools are in residential neighborhoods in our town. Think of like Sunset Park, for example, or Carlisle. Well, if they have to be repurposed because they're they're surplus to the district, what are they? What do you do with those things? They're in a neighborhood, so your land uses are sensitive. You know, you're not going to put a manufacturing plant where Carlisle Elementary School is. So how do you redevelop those? And the school district is not a redevelopment agency. But they could partner with the Urban Renewal Authority to dispose of the property, come up with a redevelopment plan in addition to the city to to look at those things. And the authority can accept property from various bodies without the need for competitive bidding or things like that. And so we are a a useful tool, and we're actually, we've we're pioneering a a a project with the school district on Strack Elementary School to try to repurpose that school, which served an immigrant community back in, you know, the the school was first built in like eighteen eighty something. It was Hinsdale School, and then they uh, demoed it and rebuilt Strack School, but it's surplus property now, and it's right in the heart of Bessemer. So what are you? What are you going to do with it? So it's surplus to the district. It's a liability, but they're working with us to try to come up with a plan to redevelop it. But we can't begin the redevelopment process until we have a plan and but all the preliminary studies and things like that are in our wheelhouse, and we have the the authority to and the scope to do that, to do those activities. You may have, you may have seen this slide um, over the years. This is a an attempt to explain how tax increment works. And what that is, is urban renewal districts are authorized for twenty five years or or subject to some other performance provision as determined by the city, but generally it's twenty five years. And the dark blue band at the bottom from year zero to year twenty five, that is the base tax collection as determined by the assessor in year zero. So that's the base. So that money that's paid every year by whoever pays the property taxes, that stays with all the taxing bodies. They never lose anything. What you see in the light blue up top, that's new incremental growth, which pays new taxes generated from that activity that comes to the authority. So they take the taxing bodies mill levy and assign it to the authority. Okay, that portion of it, the portion that they pay that's part of the base, school district, county gets that. What's above that, in the light blue is what comes to the authority to do projects inside the city limits. The yellow hatched area, that's what they call the ratchet, which is every two years, the county assessor reassesses property countywide. As part of that reassessment, they reassess the base and the base goes up based on the activity. So actually, the taxing bodies are better off in the long term because there is a ratchet up of the base. And then obviously, at the twenty fifth year, urban renewal sunsets and the property tax base for that area has raised has risen significantly. Um, we've sunsetted a few districts over the years. The nineteen eighty five district downtown expired in twenty twelve. Last year, revenue in downtown expanded, which is the Riverwalk, that expires in twenty twenty nine. So that's coming. That's just down the road. Um, and hopefully, by the time we're out of there, you have positive investment. You can show that over that time using urban renewal on the Riverwalk made some sense. This, this is a dollar bill that shows what a typical uh, tax bill would be and what portion of your tax bill goes to the different taxing bodies. Okay, so in this case, you know, the county, the District sixty has two mill levies. They have their general mill levy, and then they have their bond redemption mill levy. The bond redemption is what goes towards capital projects. The city, you can see it's it's portion of the mill levy because the city is most interested typically in sales tax as opposed to property tax. And then you have the library, the lower arc in the Southeastern Water Conservancy District. Over the years, District sixty has expressed concern about the dedication of their bonded indebtedness mill levy. And for some of our districts, the authority has agreed to return that, or I shouldn't say return it, convey it, that portion of what we collect from the assessor to the school district for that purpose, to retire debt for new schools. So that's what this next slide is. So in the modern day, this is typically what we're talking about and why it's important for the authority to have good working relationships with our taxing bodies. Alrighty. Now I'm going to get into our districts, kind of one at a time, but I'm going to try to go through this fast because there's a lot to go over. Our old current oldest district is the downtown expanded urban renewal district. If you look in the middle of the map, you see that blue kind of a donut hole and then the donut. The donut hole was the nineteen eighty five plan that expired in twenty twelve. So that's why there's a donut hole. In that one, it was property tax and sales tax. That was the only district authorized for sales tax use. And that is since expired. There are many projects. You can go through your packet and look at those, but it's I think it's been a very successful endeavor on our part in the cities. North Pueblo came shortly after that. The the purpose of that project area generally was funding the Dillon flyover, and there are multiple phases of that flyover. Um, to facilitate what we did up north, the Urban Renewal Authority and the city partnered where the city lent uh, the authority one point six million in highway uh, user funds, uh, highway tax user funds and the faster program through state legislation. So the city advanced that to the authority to pay the beginning debt service until the commercial businesses were operational, which generated the TIF. Then we repaid the city with interest, and we're still paying down the debt there. So it was a a good community-wide project that we it was instrumental to partner with the city. Lake Minnaqua, uh, that project area was set up for a few reasons. The uh, the prime mover for that, and I don't know if you can see on the screen here, that's the South Side Lowes. The South Side Lowes was a, uh, believe it or not, was a controversial project when it first came. The neighbors right over here didn't want it. It was zoned residential. And so we were working with the developer and came up with a compromise, which which was a planned unit development with some other things that we required the developer to do. I don't know if anybody's actually been behind that store. There's a green space and a nice trail. It's actually a really nice space for those folks, and that was part of that project. But the other thing was remember, I mentioned earlier that the city desired the authority to be self-sufficient? The bulk of the administrative funds to the authority come out of this district. And it's written in the cooperation agreement between the authority and the city. That's when it was set up. Dave Galley was city manager. He was a negotiator. I was planning director. Mike Tedesco was. That's how we set that up. So that the authority could be in could be self-sufficient. Also, in this district, we renovated uh, or redesigned Lake Avenue. And the authority pays for all of the landscape maintenance and operations on that street. When the district goes away in twenty thirty two, it becomes a city responsibility. So for the time being, we're paying for that to benefit that area. South, South Santa Fe was the uh, redevelopment project for the old Knuckles Alpha Beta Meat Packing Plant. It was originally called the Ice House Project. Um, then the recession hit. The original property or lost the pro- lost the property through foreclosure. And so now you have the Water Tower Place folks that are trying to revive that. When the state came in and condemned property for the I twenty five realignment, they took out the tax base there. They closed Hobbs Linoleum. They took out um, Cliff Bryce. They took out all these businesses that were there. So they dropped that base all the way down that um, there's no increment. The increment can't backfill even the base. So that's why there's no revenue generated there. St. Charles, which is Vestas, that's another, another successful project in that we were able to pay off all the incentives early. And by paying it off early, we were able to amend the cooperation agreement to provide a mechanism for us to give tax dollars back to the taxing bodies. This one was controversial at the time because that project was tasked was tasked with, um, helping the city fund the new fire station number four on Lake Avenue. As part of the Vestas project, our fire response time from station number one, which has the rescue and the aerial ladder truck, stuff that you would need for a big industrial facility. It was outside the response window. And it just so happened that we were building a new fire station. So fire station number four on Lake was oversized so we could, we could allocate an aerial ladder truck down there and respond within, I guess, the response, an appropriate response window. That was former fire chief Chris Riley was the one that brought that issue to a head. It's part of that, the city retained its tax increment. So we collect it and then we write a check every year to the city. This year it's over $400,000. While the other taxing bodies weren't very happy about that. But today I'll tell you, they are happy because of that project and our ability to pay it off early. We were able to use their, the tax increment allocated by the county and the school districts to fund a bond issue to help them solve some problems that they have. And it's the authority's debt, not district 60s or Pueblo County. You can see how that $17 million bond issue played out. And that's how we were able to fund, you know, Dutch Clark and which we received a lot of good, good press on that. Not so much on Pueblo West, but you know, and then try to help the county out with, uh, the regional medal of honor boulevard. So that's a good example of the authority thinking outside the box and partnering with our taxing friends. You know, how can urban renewal benefit the school district, the county? Well, the benefit is instead of us writing them a check or paying debt service on their behalf, it's our debt, not their debt. It's a multi-fiscal year obligation. So the urban renewal authorities are not subject to Tabor. So we can enter into multi-fiscal year obligations, a bank loan, a bond or whatever, without going to the voters. But we have to have the revenue stream. So instead of D60 borrowing 5.2 million for Dutch Clark, we borrowed it for them. And we're putting it in for them. So the, this is really a good example of how if you, if you work together, you can solve some of these bigger community, uh, problems. Thunder Village is a project area created in the wake of the, uh, reestablishing the football program at CSU Pueblo with Thunder, the Thunder Bowl, which is right there. They had to extend utilities over probably two and a half, three miles to serve that, uh, the stadium, it's outside a water pressure zone. It was outside a drainage basin that had adequate infrastructure. And the sanitary sewer had to be extended from Constitution all the way up to there. So as part of that project, urban renewal was brought in to, um, hopefully, uh, repay the development group that put in some of that core infrastructure. Unfortunately, again, 2008, what did we hit? We hit a recession. And so things didn't take off like they'd planned. We're slowly starting to get some revenue back in that area, but that revenue primarily goes to pay repay about $11 million in, uh, well, it was 6.5, but it's about 11 now of outstanding obligations in that, in that area. Union Avenue, um, probably one of the, the biggest things that we did down there was, was work on the streetscapes. B Street in front of the favorite and the restaurants down there. Urban renewal paid for that sidewalk widening on B Street. That's what that project was. The Kushner Building, uh, it was an old block brick, or not brick, sandstone block building on Union Avenue that was falling in. We worked with the developer, restored it to the Department of Interior Standards, replaced the storefront and helped save that building on Union Avenue. That was an urban renewal project. Uh, we put in some other minor things like in, we, we paved the alley between Union and Victoria, the Riverwalk and D Street. If you ever go in that alley, all the brick pavers that are there, that was an urban renewal project. And then lastly, the fuel and iron project, we were asked by the city to be the conduit for the city to provide a sales tax increment incentive. That incentive is up to $3.1 million for the work that they're doing there. And so in that particular case, there is no property tax increment generated. But the sales tax, the city will collect and then the city will remit that to the authority and then we remit it to, to the developer without any fees. So we just, we just do that one. Eastside, this one has been a labor of love, but it's been very, very tough. This is, this neighborhood, I mean, it has everything going against it. Highest level of poverty, highest level of concentration of minorities and elderly and aging in place. And I can go on and on and on and on. Uh, I don't know how many houses are burnt up there every year, but it's quite a few. And, uh, we're to a point now where we're focusing on workforce infill housing in that neighborhood. We're working on a demonstration project right now to hopefully build four new workforce homes. So individuals who have jobs and can qualify, building four homes on the 600 block of East Second Street. Right in the heart, right there. Right in the heart of the Lower East Side. So hopefully it'll be a transformative project. It's one of those demonstrations where we've monitored the current condition, property tax rates, housing values, things like that. And as we implement this project, monitor those over time. And hopefully what we could see is there's benefit in the city quickly demolishing houses that are burnt up and quickly replacing those because there's an actual benefit tax wise for doing that. And you know, all the, the data and the research and the public, you know, they all say that this is this is what we should be doing. We just haven't done it. And so we're going to try it with our own data and should have our own results to show for it. So, uh, I'm pretty excited about that because this is a challenge. This is our Gary, Indiana Detroit type problems that we're trying to avoid here in Pueblo. I mean, we think it's bad here. You should see some of those neighborhoods over there. So, uh, Lower West Side, this project area was put on hold because of the levy reconstruction in Wild Horse Creek. So Wild Horse Creek is right, whoops, right here. Right down the center line, you have Pete Jimenez Park, Bethlehem Apartments over here. This neighborhood here, when I first was tasked to look at it, it's, I didn't even know that area, the city existed. Doesn't have curb and gutter sidewalks. There's, it was developed in unincorporated Pueblo County originally and then brought into the city and it's, uh, it needs a lot of love for sure. But, um, now that the conservancy district is done with their work, they had some surplus property that they gave to us. And we're looking at some potential redevelopment activity right here, which happens to be the, a budding neighbor to some properties that the city owns. So we may be knocking on your door to see if we can do something to either put housing or industrial right here, uh, in that neighborhood. This project area also would help provide funding if, if the increment were there for the study to connect 11th Street into downtown over the train tracks. Everas, Everas is straightforward. The authority agreed to provide a hundred million dollars in tax increment to the environmental remediation of the old Coke plant site. Which is right here, whoops. My grandfather worked at that, go get that Coke plant for 39 years. One of the dirtiest places. And at one point in time, that was the single largest spot of pollution in the entire state of Colorado in like 1979. And that's why they went away from turning Coke, converting Coke or coal to Coke. And they went to electronic arc furnace. And that's why Comanche was built. Part of that. So it's kind of interesting that to solve an environmental problem, they're taking out the solution to a previous environmental problem. So that's this project. It Coke is a, it's, they remove all the moisture and gases, chemicals out of coal. They superheat it, kind of like making charcoal. If you're familiar with how that works, well, anyway, they superheat it, pull all the gases off of it and make other products, gases, oils, other things. And then as part of the steelmaking process, it's Coke, which is the fuel, limestone and iron ore. And those things are what's added into the blast furnace at different times to make raw steel. So that was, and so now CF and I is basically a recycling operation. So you don't need the raw material of the coal, the Coke or even the limestone. No, Coke, that's Coke with a K. This is Coke, K. This, this Coke is C O K E, not K O C H. No, oh, that's our, nothing's dumb. This is our history here.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, uh, you know, this project, we had to work hand in glove with the city to get it annexed, zoned, create an urban renewal district. Cause historically CF and I didn't want any of their properties within the city limits. That goes way back to William Jackson Palmer. All right. Um, one of our most recent project areas is the Mitchell Park South, which is basically, um, just south of force, East Force Street, 12th Street, Mitchell Park is right there. Joplin and Norwood, we actually have, our first revenue collection year is $93,000. We have available to the board to undertake some project activities there. There are some vacant lots that the city owns in there. Um, that we're looking at housing, the, that workforce housing. And also, you know, the city purchased or helps the community health center demolish their building at Fourth and La Crosse. We originally were looking to work with them to put some workforce housing there, but I don't know what the, the city's desire is for that. But that once upon a time was a project we were going to undertake. And, uh, la, you know, kind of wrapping this up a little bit, we've just approved or the city council just approved two new project areas, the Bluffs, North Elizabeth, these are very small, they're single property districts. Pretty straightforward. All the development agreements are in place. We hope, uh, there's construction soon. And with that, it's pretty broad, kind of all over the place a little bit with this, but, uh, that's a snapshot of what we do and what we're doing. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you got.
Any questions from council?
Sure.
Yes, um, councillor Hernandez.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Pacheco.
Good evening.
I have a number of questions that I've tried to follow along with pretty big presentation here, but I appreciate it. I followed on, follow along pretty well. In fact, uh, I was an apprentice under Tony Fortino back in the early nineties. I was on a renewal and we selected the Marriott. So I have a pretty in-depth experience with how things have evolved and, uh, in a very good way. So, I want to try to understand a little bit. You started out and what you, I tried to paraphrase, I'm paraphrasing here, but you said the last couple of years or so, the opportunities were not good. We're not in a good position. Can, can I paraphrase that?
We, we did not have a good working relationship with the city administration.
Go down, that's what you meant.
That's what I meant. We, we, that's fine. It's almost as if we accomplished what we accomplished out of spite.
All right. I don't want to go down that path, but I'll just
It's sad that way.
Your opportunities. So your powers of authority, uh, one bullet was, uh, you can acquire property including eminent domain.
Yes.
And I thought when I read the Bluffs, uh, project that did, did not include eminent domain in that project. Is, did I, am I recalling that right?
What we've historically done in areas that are broader areas, like the Lower East Side, because folks are concerned about the use of eminent domain, which is very controversial. And those urban renewal plans, we've written in that if urban renewal is going to undertake eminent domain, city council has to authorize it.
Okay.
And you may actually get your first request for authorization this year for the property at 623 East Second Street, which is right across the street from the project we're trying to do with the house that's burned up. You know, we're, we're potentially putting a million dollars worth of investment right across the street from a house that's burned up. And so the, our board may, uh, may decide to request that from you all.
Okay. And this was, the, the question goes towards, you know, going out 25 years. And just because you could go out 25 years, why do you always seem to do that?
That, that's the city's choice.
Okay. So the, the example or taking your slide where you have the ratchet effect. And, and then so there's an increase in property values. And so that's all good. So in reality then, as you have a, a faster stream of, uh, of, of tax revenues, right? That then can basically extinguish that debt sooner or not?
It could, if that was the decision, most cities choose not to do that for a very selfish reason. And you want to guess what that selfish reason is? It goes back to our dollar bill.
Okay.
You get to spend
Sure.
Other people's money, at least that's what they allege, inside the city limits. That's not the, that's not the message, but the naysayers of urban renewal, that's what they're saying is you're taking our money. It's like, no, we're doing city projects inside the city limit using this revenue stream that otherwise would just go directly to the county, directly to D60 and to the other districts. And many of these are actually county wide taxing bodies. And you know, um, when someone, let's say the library district, we're to complain about all that dang cities using urban renewal and they're spending our money in, um, in the city limits. And they should be spending it because they're county wide. I tried to point their attention to the previous strategy, which was creating industrial park in unincorporated Pueblo County with city money. And so everybody benefits from the property taxes of everything at the airport industrial park, but the city. You understand what I'm saying? All those buildings out there were built in unincorporated public, as that was the strategy. Most people didn't, most cities don't do that. They use a tool like urban renewal or something else. So the city has a direct benefit. And so those are some of the political give and take and jurisdictional things. But that's why to the city, it's a very good tool. It is a very good tool. So, um, I hope that answered your question.
That's good. That's good. We can go on. So, and just for, uh, I guess clarification to understand Tabor and your exemption from that. So Tabor is 1%, as I recall, uh, when I ran finance of the assessed value for the city, let's say it's 1.3 billion. Therefore the city has a capability to borrow 130 million. You go to the voter. So you're able, you know, you're not prohibited. You're not, uh, help me understand.
We don't levy.
Subject to that.
We don't, it's, it's kind of an interesting, it's an interesting facet of this. It doesn't apply to urban renewal because urban renewal does not levy a tax.
Okay.
We're not the ones levying it. The taxing bodies are the ones that are empowered to levy it. The general assembly just changed the, the flow at where it goes. So the assessor makes the assessment, figures out what's base, what's TIF. The treasurer then takes the receipts of the increment and sends it directly to the authority. It never shows up as revenue to all the other taxing bodies where under Tabor, it would count as revenue to them.
Yeah.
Doesn't count. It comes to us. And since urban renewal does not levy a tax in the way Tabor is structured, it only affects those that levy a tax.
From a simple financing concept, and I think that, and this is my premise, that Tabor is kind of a, a bench guard or, or, or kind of rails, rails, if you will, so that a, uh, an entity, a municipality doesn't over leverage themselves. Okay. Right. So then it goes to my question then, far as urban renewal, not over leveraging itself. Because if you have 132 million dollars in, in debt, right? Another 47 down the pipe with the Bluffs and, uh, and 17 million on North Elizabeth, correct? Correct?
Yeah.
Right. You know, uh, anyway, in, in broad context. So that, uh, and I did ask the question of, uh, Chair Williams, and he helped me try to understand, when I looked at the financial, financials of urban renewal, I look at, you know, 100 When I looked at the financial, financials of urban renewal, look at, you know, 160 million dollars of debt and you have 60 million in assets. That's upside down. That looks like to me, you're, you're bankrupt already. You don't have the liquidity to pay your debt.
We, we actually changed our fiscal notes to reflect, to more accurately reflect
Okay.
what goes on. And we actually had to convince a lot of people. All you gotta do is look at the audit from Colorado Springs and look at the audit from Denver. It does a very good explanation when about how we're able to do what we do with that situation. We don't have the offsetting asset, right?
Right.
We're a hundred million dollars to environmental cleanup. What kind of asset is that? So it's an undertaking, but the thing about urban renewal and every one of our districts stands alone is that we only pledge the revenue from that district to that district's debt. We don't pledge revenue from one district to another for debt service. That doesn't happen. So if, let's say, for example, Everest were to go bankrupt tomorrow, close the building and they don't, they didn't come, they never flipped the switch for the long rail mill.
Ninety one point two million.
Ninety one point two million. The bondholders who purchase those bonds are the ones at risk.
They got.
The only recourse they have is the property tax increment revenue that would have been generated from Everest. That's it.
And that's where I, where I struggled to understand that is if, if they went bankrupt, you're not going to have that.
Right.
And so that is a tremendous, that's a big risk.
It is.
I think.
It is.
Okay.
But at the, it, there's no recourse to the taxpayers.
Yeah.
The broader taxpayers other than, than Everest.
A couple more. I'm almost done here. So the, the, and also on your, in your long-term obligations. And this was when I was in finance, you have a $14 million debt obligation to the city.
Right.
Uh, 12 million or so convention center, the gateway was a couple of millions, something like that. I do recall you can refinance or, or re, not refinance, but extend that like in a couple of years, 2027 or another 10 years, if you will.
The, the idea there would be, um, to try to pay off the debt service to the RTA bonds early would be the 2027. There were three projects identified for the use of the 35.7 million from the state sales tax increment. There were three things that we had to spend the money on. The first was the convention center expansion itself. The second was the PBR sports performance center. And the third, which has not been done, is an aquatic center for the community. The remaining, um, what we estimate is if we refinance our debt or paid off early, there could be 10 million available in future unobligated uh, state sales tax increment that could be used for the aquatic center. That's where that money would come from. But 10 million is not going to build you aquatic center. Now with respect to the 14 four, that decision was a city council decision uh, to figure out a way, the state of Colorado Office of Economic Development and International Trade demanded that the city put up money for the RTA project. Um, from the beginning, from the outset, the city really didn't have a whole lot of money in the RTA, but the state was going to obligate 35.7 million in future state sales tax. Well, there were only five projects granted RTA status. The Olympics stuff in Springs, the National Western Stock Show in Denver, us. Um, Northern Colorado has a big project up there and I'm trying to think of what the other one is. Oh, Aurora, the Gaylord Hotel. All of those projects had a local match or a private developer had a match. Ours didn't. And so during that whole negotiation, and the only way the city could figure out at that time, a way to, to, to undertake the project was to allocate, amend the sales tax criteria ordinance and have some sales tax fund and then appropriate the money to the authority. So, um, that money was used ag- again for the project, but basically as part of the match, it built the gateway plaza for the heart project. So we borrowed 2 million for the city for that. That's a general obligation debt for us. The city, we, we did what the city told us to do.
I'm a, there's two sides of that coin. One end is that, you know, you, that, those two projects have been done for the city, if you will. And we get the benefit of that. So as a, as a pure financial person, I look at this, this, this debt and said, either it's going to be paid off or it's not. And, um, and I, I think you probably have the capability to do that, but here again, the city benefits from it. Right? So either, either we extinguish the debt or you're able to repay the city back and be able to use the 14 million elsewhere. But I'm, I flipped on that after.
This, uh, I'll tell you that up until five years ago, the city and the urban renewal authority were hand in glove on everything. Everything. As urban renewal directors used to attend department head meetings. They were that close. Mike Tedesco, John Beatty, all of them used to go to our staff meetings as directors because we needed that relationship. That was all destroyed five years ago. We're trying to repair this.
Okay. And this is just an observation. The last point is that, uh, I was born and raised in the Grove to see what is not happening is disheartening for me. You know, personally, as I still have relatives there, seems to be a tough, tough pocket similar to east side, if you will.
Yeah.
Right.
But I think things are starting to change. I had a conversation with Councilman Latino about exploring something a little bit more focused on Goat Hill, which potentially would involve what I, I guess I would call the east side of the Grove, you know, because the interstate pretty much cuts it in half. Of, you have part of the Grove that's in that South Santa Fe district. And then the area immediately south of Goat Hill, that potentially could be included in that Goat Hill district that Councilman Latino is considering.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Madam Chair, thank you.
Um, councillor Gomez.
Yeah, I just want to urge everybody, if you get a chance, just to sneak up on Jerry over at the Urban Renewal, don't let him know you're coming. Um, simply because I go up there and I'm just curious about all the things that are going on, how things work simultaneously. And I'm, I think that what we have going on at Urban Renewal, the things I'm learning about it, uh, is really helpful to me. But when I go up there and this guy's out there cutting out things that are a little exacton knife and making trees and making roofs and, and giving the visual of what they're going to do on the east side. That's good stuff to me. And, uh, in reference to my area, District Four in Bessemer, I'm shooting for historic downtown Bessemer. I'm shooting for libraries and those kinds of things. And I'm starting to learn how this works simultaneously with everything else that's going on. It's just so much that I see and I recognize. But again, please go by there, see what he's got going on. And you'll have all these maps that are all over this office and it just brings a lot of it into focus for me. So for what that's worth. Thank you. Come on by.
Um, councillor Flores.
Yeah. On, on our agenda today, uh, you did a great job in explaining, you know, uh, the first part of it. But on my agenda, it says potential Colorado smelter urban renewal area as a topic.
Okay. Yeah, let's talk about that.
But, you know, I, we're running out of time, but I wanted to make sure that you had a chance to talk about.
We would love to come back for that, but I could give you a snapshot real quick. We're dealing with.
But I do want to, I want to make two points. The further point is that ironically, uh, we just got our financial audit for urban renewal today in the finance committee. And we talked a lot about this, how the financial statements for urban renewal have to show all this debt. And we have 135 million, but, but you can't show the offsetting uh, stream of revenue that's going to pay that. But at the end of the day, when you look at the financial statement, you say, my God, that's a lot of debt. Number one, the city has no responsibility and neither does urban renewal. No one said that. Who, the, the, the exposure and the risk are to the bondholders on all of these bonds. And, uh, so far, I mean, we, you know, it, it's operating the way it should. Nobody's gotten hurt. Uh, and, uh, I was going to make another point and I just lost my train of thought. Okay. So that, that's the one thing that's really important. The other thing that's important is that how much interest do you have to pay the city for the, the promissory note?
It's 3% of that 14 for balance.
It's about, it's over 400,000.
Yeah, it's like 500,000 a year.
Yeah. And this is money that was basically for a city project. They're paying interest, which effectively it could be used probably on some other project. Uh, at some point, I think we have to have a serious discussion about forgiving that debt because it makes no sense. It's, it's really like a debt between a husband and a wife in my mind. Well, it makes, it makes no sense that we have that burden, uh, which is at the end of the day is hurting other projects.
Why? And I have another one for you. The urban renewal owns the main street parking garage. City owns the ground. Urban renewal has a lease till 2056. 2029, that district goes away, but Urban Renewal has a $17 million asset on the Riverwalk, which is the parking garage. What are we going to do with that? We don't have revenue per se coming in to maintain it. Right now we have a 50 or 60, 40 split with the city on debt service, but that debt service is paid off in 2029. So what do we do with that asset?
And I believe that in the city's budget, we, we maintain that, correct?
Right. That's part of the 60, 40 split. We pay 60, the city pays 40.
Well, tell us about the, the, uh, this is really the Bessemer area, but you're.
Oh, but the smelter, yes, smelter, we were requested by, as part of the local health department's study of the Colorado smelter area, the, with the EPA. We were not part of all of that discussion until they were done with the plans and everything else. And they tried to figure out how to implement all those items. And then someone said, well, urban renewal should do it. So the health department asked the city through us. We made a presentation to the, to the city and the city approved a resolution instructing us to study it. We studied, uh, over 5,000 individual properties, did an assessment, determined that because of the rate of decline, that in other words, the number of houses that are continuing to burn up. If we created the big district, we might be shooting ourselves in the foot, just like the South Pablo or the, yeah, where the water tower places, you know, how they, the property base just kept dropping. So there was no revenue. You build something new. All you're doing is backfilling the base. That's what was our concern in, in, in Bessemer is big. I mean, it goes from starter field all the way down to Corwin, Lake Avenue, all the way to the interstate, past the interstate. Actually Bojontown was in there. So as part of that discussion, we recommended as a staff, a much smaller district. And what we're, we arrived working with the local group, citizen group. Um, I think we're about ready to bring forward a revised proposal, which would just include um, a much smaller area focused on Mesa and Northern itself. So it'd basically be Ormond to, well, all of Bojontown, but up to like route, down to Stone, Ormond over. It's a much smaller area when you look at the, the big stuff. So.
But haven't you done the work already?
We've done all the work, but we, we were not, we were told that we could not get on the city council's agenda. So we've been working on this for quite a while. And, uh, we had to tell the neighborhood group that, uh, it was on hold, pending the desire of the city to move it forward. So if the city wants to move it forward, just tell us, we'll get on your agenda. We already, and this thing is so far along the process, we have all the taxing agreements done and we've had them done for almost a year. So.
When was your request to get on the city council agenda?
Two years ago. Oh, the request to try to get this done?
Yeah.
Over the last year.
Recently, when, did you have a request to get on the?
Not since the election.
Okay. Well, we have a new administration. We have a new council.
Well, I, I agree. I, I mean, it, it, it took us to get the two that we just put, that we also were working on forever to get those through. Next meeting, we have the resolution on the Dillon project. So we're trying, there's only four of us. Urban renewal does 32 million plus budget with four people. So I'm proud to be the head chef and bottle washer.
You know, cut, cut and all that stuff. Make a presentation on this, this district.
Yeah, I think that would, a, a specific presentation with all the maps and the discussion would be beneficial.
Councillor Martinez. Yeah, I remember that first one. It was huge. It was a huge district. It was going to be the largest in history, right?
Oh, yeah.
But that's exciting that it's pared down a little bit, but.
It's more manageable.
Yeah, but I'm glad that it's still moving forward. That's, I'm really glad to hear that. I know that how hard that citizen group were, has been working to push that. So that's really good to hear. My question, Jerry, is, um, so with the downtown, uh, TIF district expiring in 2029, is it a thing where your board can reapprove another 25 years?
That would be city council.
Okay. But what do you, I mean, what do you think about that? Do you think that that's needed for like a, a re-up for another 25 years or?
The timing, I, I think it does warrant creation of a new district. I will tell you that because only roughly, what, four out of the nine heart pad sites have been developed. That district was put down there to incentivize all that stuff. And so how do you provide incentives to those other four or those other harp lots? It's, you know, extremely difficult to try to develop down there. It's very, very expensive. And so every project on the Riverwalk has had some sort of incentive because it's so expensive.
Right. And I saw that the old health department lot is on there too. Um, that, and I know that's been really hard. So it sounds like then revisiting it within the next five years about shifting the boundaries, but keeping it as a TIF district.
Well, you would, we actually, well, you, it would be a substantial amendment to the down, the current district. If you do it before the end of 2029, it'd be a major modification to that district to remove the properties that you would put into a new district.
And then would you have to continue it to?
Then it would be the new district city council would have to approve for a new 25 years.
Okay.
With a new plan, a new pro, uh, new project list, any of that kind of stuff.
At least it's on our radar though. So that's good.
Yeah. I mean, it would, it's kind of crazy that the Riverwalk's already over 20 some years old.
Go.
You know, it's, it's pretty amazing. Time flies.
Um, councillor Latino, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. First of all, I want to thank, uh, councillor Gomez and Mr. Pacheco because, uh, about a week, two weeks ago, we took a tour of the lower east side and, 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 and our other areas. And he was gracious enough, as busy as he is, uh, Mr. Pacheco, to come with us and, and look over the, the areas that we're, we're councillor and representatives of. Um, I think he's hit some points in terms of what's going on and what needs to be done. And I think it's time, folks, that we start spending money on the lower east side and in Bessemer and on the upper east side and, and doing some things in our community that have been neglected. Um, in addition to that, we, we're talking about the Span Elementary School. I've been out there a number of times. We've had the homeless living in that area. They just about burned it down. Um, we're, we're also talking about security and safety in our community. And again, it's, it's, and, and this doesn't relate to Mr. Pacheco, but it relates to the police department. It's time for, for us to, to consider substations in our community. I brought that point up again and I'm, uh, once before, and I'm bringing it up again. It, it's very disheartening to see what's going on and we're spending money and we don't have substations in a community, uh, with a hundred thousand plus people and close to 200,000 in the county as well. Uh, it's time that we be realistic and, and, and start moving forward with projects that, uh, are important to our community. Substations, security and safety and, uh, the, the plight that exists and enhancing our, our community with, with, uh, housing that, that's, uh, sustainable. Uh, when we've had houses burned down and not replaced. And so again, thank you, Mr. Pacheco. And, and, uh, I leave that message for the council and for the mayor to take a look at and for the chief of police. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Gomez, it looks like.
Yeah, I'm just catching up to a lot of the stuff on the super fight, super fun site. I just got to be honest about that, but, uh, some of the super fun soldiers that I want to recognize are Pam and Joe Kokman. These folks are just incredible. And, uh, they've, they're, I think, believe it's the CAG work group. And these folks have been just working so hard. And to get this kind of stuff that you were talking about on the agenda, what else do we have to do? What, what can we do to get this moving? Because they, they really deserve it. They deserve recognition.
The map we arrived at was their recommendation. We provided some background and some details and we worked with that group. They're the ones that arrived at that map.
Wow.
And it's ready to go.
Okay.
So if you tell. So if you tell me tonight, you nod all you nod your head, then I'll make a request to the city because we're ready to go.
And just put in the request and we'll get you on this on the calendar. I'm going back to the tax base. So is the tax base reduced once the um area is deemed blighted?
No.
So if you've had, so what is the if it's $400, it's not, once it's blighted, it's not reduced?
Correct.
So it stays the same. So if it's $400 for that lot, it's always $400.
Well, it's it's at the discretion of the county assessor and the current assessor historically has applied a single rule, which is it doesn't, just because you're in an urban renewal district, it doesn't affect your value. Negatively, that's what.
No, not talking about the value. I'm talking about the amount of taxes that that developer has to pay on that lot.
Which value relates to what you pay in property taxes for the assessor. So that piece of it doesn't change. Now, if you make improvements to your property and your tax bill goes up, you're still obligated to pay that.
Mm hmm.
Everas, for example, they're building a half billion dollar facility. What's paying the $100 million bond off is their future property tax payments. They didn't get a waiver from that. They are obligated to pay that. And so that's the revenue stream that's allocated for 25 years to pay the debt service.
Mm hmm. And when you have um property or projects that aren't moving and you have a revenue and expense, is all of your expense that's coming out, is that going just towards your tax base or what else is usually involved in the expense in a property that's really just not moving? A project that's not moving?
If a project area is generating revenue, but there is insufficient revenue to undertake project, that money is held in the special fund. Every project area that we create.
Why do you have your revenue and your expense matching?
Because all governing bodies in the entire state of Colorado have to have a balanced budget.
Correct, but if you're you, wouldn't you have your expense in an account somewhere rather than it not an expense, but more of at as an asset to that area to that Tiff District?
An expense is an asset? No.
Well, no, but you just said it's staying in a savings where I'm looking at your total revenue.
Okay.
And your total expense and they match.
Right. As the cities does as well.
But that we also have assets. And so if it's an asset account, if you're not spending, if you're taking in the revenue and you're putting it aside, it would be considered an asset, not an expense, correct?
It is considered uh we have to create a special fund to place all the tax increment for every single individual district and they have to be segregated.
And so you're calling that an expense?
It has to. You have to budget and appropriate the money into the fund balance. Just like the city does every year. If you have a capital projects, for example, that are going to carry over multiple years because the city is on an annual budget, you you have to accounting wise, you have to budget the money and appropriate it. So that appropriation counts as an expense. That's an expense. On governmental, I mean, unless the city's finance director wants to correct me or somebody else, but that's my understanding of governmental accounting.
Is it counted as an expense if you're appropriating?
You have anything that is appropriated for expenditure, even if that appropriation is going into your fund balance or your savings. It'll show up as expense.
Yeah, it I guess maybe what you could do is just like send a couple of um budget reports for each one of your projects for council to see that, how that is, because right now what we're seeing is total revenue and total expense. We're not seeing that we have.
Our budget looks exactly like your budget. So you're going to get a budget in the form exactly how your municipal budget is. But we have that. I send it to you.
Mm hmm. That would be nice to see that you have an account.
It's on our website. All of our, all of our audits, we, hey, we went through a clean audit, not a single note, not a single you know, whatever they call those things.
Mm hmm.
No comments, no corrections, nothing. We're clear.
So good.
I challenge the city to do that this year, too.
You know, I'd like to see that. So it's on the website. So each one of yours are.
Should be, yeah.
Your budgets are on the website.
Mm hmm.
Okay. All right. We'll take a look at that.
Absolutely.
All right. And so you're coming back and you're asking for a resolution to move forward on the um this Bessemer project. And then are you asking for a resolution to move forward on the Dillon Drive project?
Yeah, that we're asking for that one, not the next meeting, but the meeting after that.
Mm hmm.
So you'll be considering that. The other one is different. Because we're already through the product. Dillon allows us to prepare a plan. We're already done with all that on the Bessemer project. I mean, literally what we need to do is.
So you bet you're coming for a work session to let bring everybody up to date on what that is. Before we.
Absolutely, I can't.
Before we see the resolution, we'd like to probably just hear what you have to say.
Well, if the desire is to bring it forward, we need to determine when the public hearing date is so we could, so we could put the 30 day public notice with sufficient time to actually get it published by the newspaper more than 30 days prior to the meeting. So when I looked at the council and asked for direction, I need to work with the city mayor's office, say, okay, here's a date further out than 30 days, a council meeting, more than 30 days out, we got to do the the notices, the written notices to the property owners and then we have to do the published notice. And then I don't know how many hundreds of notices we're going to have to send to this Bessemer project, but we got to do all that work. If you want to have a work session between now and that hearing, I'm more than happy to do that.
That's what we're asking, Mr. Pacheco. So why don't you give us a date and we'll get it on.
I I'm going to need the date from that.
Okay.
Alrighty. Well, thank you very much. You all have a great April Fool's Day.
Okay. So.
So is that cat?
It is. So um we're going to move into executive session for the purpose of determining positions.
Chair, we need to make a motion.
Oh, yes. We have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 224 dash 6 dash 402 4E and to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of any real personal or other property interests pursuant to CRS 246 402 4A.
Second.
So.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mm hmm.
Any votes?
Any oppose?
Nope.
Okay, guess we'll move that way.
Joe, they're going to call you on the phone. So you can log off this one.